I just said, I don't know all of the places that she played.
I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Ely City Council to order. If we could all rise for the pledge, hats off. I pledge allegiance to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back.
Thanks. Please, could you please call them all? Councilmember Al Horstman.
Here.
John Lott.
Here.
Jerome Belt.
Here.
Emily Rose.
Here.
Angela Campbell.
Here.
Adam Disney.
Here.
And Mira Wirsack.
I am here.
We have a full council, so we can go ahead and get started with our regularly scheduled meeting on April 1st, which I always wonder who should reschedule early for this. Especially for those of us who, I don't know, work in a schedule or work at a school because I had quite a few kindergarten districts where they were going behind anything and everything and then, and then the mosquitoes started. Thank you, councilmember. Rose. Which time is your rule here or oral here? Never know. You never know. If I could get a motion to approve our minutes for March 18th, 2025, the regular council meeting, March 18th, 2025, the public hearing on ordinance 389, and March 18th, 2025, the public hearing on dehumidifier rates. Moved by Jerome, supported by Emily. Any changes to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Any additions or omissions on tonight's agenda? Besides one, we have one. Need a motion to approve that one? Moved by Jerome, supported by Adam. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any additional additions or omissions to the agenda this evening? Seeing none? We'll go ahead and perform it. We have our agenda. For mayor's report, I have before us, or I have a proclamation before us, mayor's proclamation. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I will, we have not approved our readings of our integrity of anything this evening, so I'm going to quickly read it for us. It's a little deep. There's information also that we'll be putting out. But for those of us who have known someone near or dear to us that has been sexually assaulted, I think this is something important and something that we always need to be aware of because it could be someone sitting next to you. It could be someone that you have no idea about. I think the awareness is outrageous and important. So, 2025 Sexual Assault Awareness Month Mayor Proclamation. Where Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to bring awareness to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and is a public health concern for individuals, families, community members, and communities as a whole. Whereas child sexual abuse, exploitation, rape, and sexual harassment impact all communities as seen by the national statistics. One in three girls and one in six boys will be sexually violated by the age of 18. One in five children is solicited sexually while on the internet. One-third of all sexual violence cases in Northern St. Louis County happen to children 17 years and younger. Whereas fiscal, in fiscal 2024, our local sexual assault program in Northern St. Louis County has worked with more than 391 primary and secondary crime victims of sexual violence who reside in our communities. The program, the program has provided more than 12,700 documented trauma and victim-focused advocacy services with these crime victims. Whereas SAD program, SAD board members and volunteers of our local anti-sexual violence program, the sexual assault program in Northern St. Louis County encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small, and to help survivors connect with community allies. Whereas we must work together to educate and engage community in sexual violence awareness and prevent, and to believe, listen, and learn and support its victims and its family members. Whereas a growing number of Minnesota leaders are committed to sexual violence prevention, and whereas all Minnesotans must be part of the solution to eliminate crimes of sexual violence. Therefore, I, the mayor of Ely, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the month of April in the year 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Where to start? I will sign it and it will be placed on our bulletin board. Moving on. Consent agenda. Any motion to waive our readings and their integrity of all ordinances and resolutions? Moved by Adam, supported by Emily. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Request for a beer. From the chamber.
Good evening. Do you want me to do the address and everything?
Please.
Okay. So Eva Sebasti, Director at Eva Chamber of Commerce located at 1600 Sheridan Street in Ely, Minnesota. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of our collaborative group that did the Dark Sky Zee Hunt in January that consists of the Ely Chamber, the Ely Area Tourism Bureau, and Starry Sky North. And coming up, we have International Dark Sky Week. That's April 21st through the 28th, 2025. And we're asking for support from the City of Ely and City Council via proclamation. We did include a template in the council packet that you're welcome to use or modify. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council?
I have one question just for the mayor. Can we make a motion to sign up on this International Dark Sky Proclamation at this time?
This weekend? I would like to make that motion. Is there support? Support by Angela. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I have this cop that is not going to go away. He's actually, so we, go ahead.
I just wanted to confirm with Harold that we do have the fully shielded fixtures on the outdoor area.
All new lighting that we're installing is dark side compliant, so we have hundreds of light fixtures in the city of Ely. Over the years, we've replaced many of them with LED. And the most recently replaced light fixtures with the newest standard of dark side compliance.
Thank you, group of patients. We have the dark sky light fixtures, correct?
Yes.
Because we have to, correct?
Don't have to.
We choose to.
Don't have to, we choose to, correct. Project this summer Harvey Street will also replace the existing lighting with the new dark sky compliant LED fixtures. If someone wants to look at what we are installing, they're down on the east end of Sheridan Street around Holiday Gas Station. Those are what the new fixtures look like, so.
All right. We already agreed, correct? All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Community reports. Buddy Donner.
All right. So there's a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to officially forward with the fuels and mitigation project to create a 10-acre fuel bidding break on the west end of town.
Is there support? Discussion?
I have one comment. So if the funding that has been secured for this project, if that funding wasn't able to happen or wasn't able to come through, we would not have to do this project, but other funding could be found to be able to do this project.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
And this is all on the city of Ely property, is that correct?
Go ahead.
Just a quick point of clarification that what you're, what you're being asked about on tonight is all in the city of Ely property. But there is a couple acres on the hospital, private property owned by the hospital. It'll be in the same area that will be part of this project as well.
Go ahead, Jerome.
So I guess just for clarity for those that might know, might not know what we're talking about. Gloria Erickson works for St. Louis County. It does a lot of their Firewise, well, all of their Firewise program. And one project that has been of high priority is making an applicable boundary around populated areas. Namely here in Ely, we're looking at the west end by the trailhead where we built 4th Avenue West. At least the right-of-way exists. If it's a matter of widening up that right-of-way to create that fire break if a wildfire wants to come from that direction. It's timely because the last wildfire we had was in that direction a couple of years back, so. I've been involved, of course. Player Chief's been involved. Brad has been involved, so. Just making everybody know that this is what we're doing.
Go ahead.
Gerald, just for clarification, when I'm talking, what clear cut here is going to be selected?
This would be a complete wide clear cut path.
Pretty much like the road right of way. I think we have just about that width now, and some of these areas could be a matter of widening that. Well, it's certainly removing all vegetation.
I want to clarify that. That's actually, that, that, what presented the planning and zoning is not a clear cut. It's, it would be anything six inches in diameter or smaller would be cleared. That's all we have. That's what Firewise is planning with each one of them, so it's not, it's not a clear cut. It would be an attempted removal of that if it was in that area.
Is that correct?
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Anything else?
Not for planning and zoning.
Okay.
For the Ely Green Team, I just wanted to give an update that we had our first meeting and that the chair will be me, the vice chair Mike Van Metten, and the secretary Celia Dodge.
That's all. If you have any questions on the Ely Green Team, let me know. It looks like we have a lot of work to do and lots of exciting participants.
It's gonna be new.
Excited.
It's gonna be great.
All right.
Sure. We have a recommendation from the EUC to convey to the customer that the EUC Commission did not approve the removal of the street by 1402 North, 19th Avenue East. I think that's a matter of information. We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve the $11,075 10 cent purchase of three dehumidifiers for the water treatment plant from Alden Pool. That is a motion.
Is there support? Support by Jerome? Discussion? Any discussion?
Is this included in your, Emily, sorry. Is this included in your budget?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a recommendation from the EUC to approve the $13,270 for substation testing from Revolt Electrical Services. That is a motion.
Is there support? Support by John? Any discussion?
Same question as back in your budget?
Yeah. And this is something that we've done numerous times in the past, yeah.
It's been, I think, about three years or so since they've been here. But if you want to test all this stuff, look for weak spots.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And we have a recommendation from the EUC to approve the $500 payment fixtures stuff for February operating services at the water treatment plant.
Is there support? Support by Angela? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Moving on to telecommunications advisory board. Tab.
We have a recommendation from TAF to approve the invoice for additional filming for February totaling $500 to pay the Ely area television. And that's a motion.
Is there support? Is there support? Is there support? Support by Adam? Discussion? Any discussion? Go ahead, Jerome.
So this is a lot of things like they had extra passive lighting things on TV, Ely area TV, and they had to go there and, you know, and so that extra energy put in, so that's why it's a discharge.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Then we got recommendations from TAF to renew Todd Kriegel's contract for another two-year term. It's a monthly rate of $1,750 and hourly rate not to exceed an extra $600 per month for additional filming events and meetings. And so, you know, they make you other things you ask for building stuff, which a lot of people want to see, so that we can make sure they're covering. And that's a motion.
All right. Is there support? Support by Emily? Discussion? Discussion?
Do we have the funding to pay all this?
Is there some budget?
Yes. This is funded by the franchise fees that are paid by MidContinent subscribers. This also allows for the continual upgrading and improvements with the equipment as well. So this meets the budget and our expected revenue, so we're still holding our own.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And then we have a recommendation from TAF to submit some important letters to the legislators concerning franchise fees to support public access television. I'll make that as a motion.
Is there support? Support by Emily? Any discussion? Go ahead, Jerome.
Just want to add some clarity on that. There is some efforts being made for franchise fees to be collected from those that are utilizing internet services. What is occurring from what they presented to us on a statewide basis is public access television is suffering a decline in franchise fees from subscribers that are cutting the cord, meaning they're just utilizing live stream on the internet rather than subscribing to cable-based systems. And the way franchise fees have been collected and paid by those cable companies for years, they're starting to see a reduction in those revenues. So just going back to the last discussion or the contract with Mr. Kriegel, that is paid for by subscribers of MidContinent Television. If we were to lose those subscribers of MidContinent Television to Mr. Lottin's question, we could possibly see that go the other direction. The effort is for those that want to see a live stream, they would be paying a franchise fee on their data service, and then we could provide those meetings and the other content via internet, YouTube, or whatever type of system we'd like to use for that. So we'll see where this goes. I do know that our representative is supporting this, this effort, and I think it's been started maybe this year, or maybe last legislative cycle even. We do know that the FCC was getting a lot of push to limit franchise, even with our existing franchise agreement to reduce those services. That is what caused us to hand our, our subscription for cable television in, in three or four different facilities. Those were all those included in the franchise agreement. They had to provide those at no cost. The change in legislation said that they could charge us for those services and then reduce our franchise payments. We took an active position and said, well, if you're going to charge, charge us for it. We don't need them anymore. So this would be a hope to go the other direction. So with approval on the council, we'll send these letters down to the legislature and see where it goes.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Jerome.
You know, I realize this isn't something that we're going to back here, but I do hope that our representatives take this position that all broadband providers within the city of Ely should be charged as speed, whether it is a satellite, a local, local airless system, or a wired or fiber service, you know. Keep the playing feeling, you know, I mean, I think it's important that, you know, they know where the address is of the property and that's the way it should be kept.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on. Temporary relations.
Okay. There's a recommendation from ER to approve the temporary part-time list for seasonal workers, which include people that took drafts for cemetery and other things.
Is there support? Support by Angela? Any discussion? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Recommendation, we are to approve councilmember Rose. Rose? I'm sorry.
You're good.
Lottin. Mayor Wirsack, EUC Commissioner Coleridge to the City Negotiation Committee with Clerk Blengowski and Attorney Fluton also participating in that motion.
Is there support? You should put your hands up in exactly the same height. Adam? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Rams? The minister in the packet, if there are any questions, please let me know.
On April 7th, councilwoman Emily and myself will be attending a tent for the day at the Capitol with a range. Rams today at the Capitol, and it's a day trip. We'll go down in the morning and meet with legislators and, and again, support housing and, you know, jobs on the range. And so that's just the update. I'll let you know when we get back.
More of your accomplishments. It's gonna be a good day. Any other reports? Emily, do you want to mention anything about anything that's happened anywhere today?
Well, for those of us who are major anti-mosquito, I'm just saying. Well, on what's up Ely this morning, it was posted that there's a new project going in Whiteside Park. And that on April 31st, that there will be a town hall meeting to discuss this project. Yes, today is April 1st. Everyone should take that into account. And there are different people in town that are either supporting or anti this mosquito center going in. But it is all in good fun.
I'm wondering, has Park and Rock had a chance to look at it yet?
We've actually had a last-minute meeting of opposition. We're not keen on the idea. We figured that the, there could be a, we'll, we'll be calling for some action to take.
Just thought I'd check. See, it seems like there's something that might be happening at Whiteside.
We're not happy.
I just want to comment that this was not a single effort. There were lots of people that were involved in this effort, so thank you all for having great fun.
I got a real problem with this because our claim to fame is biggest mosquitoes in Minnesota. And if we start hitting on mosquitoes, nobody's going to come here to get hit.
I know big homes.
It's nice to have some April 1st fun. I have something to say. Go ahead. It did bring attention not only statewide but nationally on CBS news. So Ely hit the airwaves today.
Yes, this was not a city thing, so we are just the byproduct of a lovely kid gate again. So, but it's fun to be fun. All right. Moving on. Department reports. My pleasure.
Nothing. All right. Good evening. I would like to remind everyone, it's your blood and your choice.
Since the last time we met, we, Ely fires responded to no fires and 15 medical calls. We, I attended the DNR Cooperator meeting. This is an annual meeting that happens in Tower every year. It's the DNR, the Forest Service, and, and most of the, pretty much all of the fire departments in Northern St. Louis County. So when we get together, we talk about the upcoming fire season. We are updating the contract that the city has with DNR to make sure. We got some new equipment that is listed on there. We've got some old equipment that we no longer possess that we need every move from that contract. So we are updating the contract with the DNR that allows us to build back our services when we're needed for any wildfires in the area. So that, that meeting occurred. It was a very well-attended meeting this year. I think there's a lot of, some of the changes happening on a federal level and some of the recent wildfires that we've seen, there was a lot of interest in how we work together. So it was good to see the scanning from home and done it to Tower D and R. So that meeting happened a couple of weeks ago. Along those same lines, there was a, there was a college conducted a burn today on Suppoi, Suppoi Road. This is kind of an annual event that the National Resource Program does, led up by faculty Ryan Miller over there. They had about a three-acre burn along the swamp of the Suppoi Road. An heat fire sent over an engine into personnel to be on standby hearing that, as we often do in the past. I think the college has some other burns in the area scheduled this, this spring as well. I would just, I would just remind people, we're supposed to maybe be getting some snow starting tonight, tomorrow, into the next day a little bit. Assuming the storm delivers a minimum of three inches, which is certainly predicted to do all of that, it would be a good time if you have piles to burn, to burn them, perhaps not during the storm, but after the storm with the snow on the ground. If you get three inches of snow on the ground, burning permits are not needed at that point. So I know there's some folks that called, called me in town, and I've seen some tiles in town. Later, this would probably be a good, good time to burn some of those piles. That's it. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Any idea where we are in the current drought status that perhaps carried over from last year?
Yeah, my understanding is we are, we have, we are quickly moving out of this drought status. And after this storm, I think that'll solidify it for us. But I'm glad you asked that because keep in mind, as some of you might remember, last, last year was the, the way the DNR played, it was the fire season that was, that wasn't, that was, again. And that's, that's kind of, that just illustrates how quickly things can change. And it really doesn't take long, a long period of time for the moisture to go as bad as it has. So I think at this point, we're looking pretty good for the spring, but, but things can, things can change quickly, especially if you're already in the winter.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time. Library director.
I would just like to say if you'd like to become better informed on mosquitoes, we do have many books on them at the library, and we also do have a few mosquito Zika virus kits for identifying it and doing citizen science with it. I think maybe five left from when we were part of the NASA My Library Project, and that is not a joke. So the first people who come in while we still have them, they can be yours. Moving on to the upcoming things at the library, on Thursday this week, April 3rd at 3:00 PM, we'll be having another in our hands on holiday series, and it is World Party Day on Thursday. So you can come in at 3:00 and get your party on. I know that there's hats and blowers, and there's going to be music, and I do not know much more than that because Justin is the one in charge of that program. Coming up the next week, it's National Library Week, April 7th through 11th. During that week, we will be having fine forgiveness on over two items. So if you've got some things that you checked out from the library and it's later under your bed or in your closet or other things like that, that would be a great week for you to return them because if they are returned during that week, we'll not charge you a fine on them. We are also currently doing book bracket voting for your favorite book. We are facing off both with the kids and the adults. So if you see on Facebook, we are posting it, or if you come in, you can see which two, two books are facing off that day in both the children's and adult categories. If you want to catch me after the meeting and talk to which two you're voting for today, that's fine too. So our So our adult ones today are The Pawn of Prophecy by David Eddings, and Shards of Honor by Lois McMaster-Jolt. And our children's ones are Little Bear's Loose Tooth by Minnark and Mercy Watson, one of the Mercy Watson books. Sorry, I don't remember which Mercy Watson, I thought it was muted from the other three in their entirety, by Katie Camello. On Monday next week at 3:00 PM, we will be having a jigsaw puzzle contest with a very special design featuring our library's turtle. We do have one slot left for a two, full team, and one other team that is taking on people, because we have a single who wants other people on there. If you register for that, you can see who puts the puzzle together the fastest, you only get bragging rights, and each team gets their own copy of the puzzle they're putting together. On Tuesday, from 10 to 4:00 PM, Friends of the Library are having Friends Day, and they will have a membership table out there where they can talk about, with you, any questions you have about what it means to be a friend of the library, and what their money supports. Kind of a spoiler alert, it supports all of our programming that I'm talking about tonight. And they are also doing line date with the books, so you can choose a wrapped book with information about what's inside uncovered. And we are not going to let you unwrap it until you take it home, but it is yours to keep once you take it home. On Wednesday, we will be doing all-day craft stick bookmark stations, you can stop in and make yourself a bookmark for your favorite book. On Thursday, we will be having a library trivia challenge, which should be no surprise to anybody that knows me that have trivia, so. So if you answer two out of three questions about libraries, or the Ely Library in specific correctly, you will win a small prize. On Friday, we have a special storytime guest, Mrs. Babett will be doing storytimes for the kids. And also, we are doing it in the library scavenger hunt with two levels, kids and adults, and search the libraries, you can spot everything. The library's not open on Saturday, but Saturday is Drop Everything and Read Day, so please, by all means, find yourself a good book and read on Saturday. And then we move on to National Library Week on Monday, April 14th. The Friends of the Library will have their next book discussion, and the book for discussion this month is Born on a Blue Day by Daniel Tanert. And also, since it is a new month, we have new kits available. The craft make and take this, this month is Wobbly Melted Snowman, which I think is wishful thinking on Tricia's Park, the snow will all go away. I kind of share that sentiment. And our new historical game that we've got out is Senate, which is a 5,000-year-old Egyptian game, similar to Razzminder, maybe, or checkers, it depends. But if you're interested in learning how to play, come in and get a kit for that, and I'll happily answer any questions. I'll give the answer, yeah, I don't know.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Rachel.
Yep.
Please chief.
Uh, not much tonight, just matter of information. Officer Olson with our department's been working with the school, our school patrol kids, and we're looking to send four students to Legionville.
People who don't know Legionville, it's a, it's in Brainerd, it's like a six-day camp for kids that specifically are in school patrol. Officer Olson went to it when she was in elementary school, and so did our new officer, Officer Arco. So it's kind of nice that there's some interest from our department that wants to do it. We've got to thank our community, because most of this is being paid for, well, all of this is being paid for from our Koxon Kids Program, and all that is donations from our community, so. More matter of information, and, oh, yeah, I guess if your, if your kid is in, if they're interested, make sure they apply by, may, April 4th, if it turns into Miss Hall, you can send it to our email.
Do you know how many students we have in school patrol?
Roughly 40. This is the most that we've had since I've been helping out with it. It's pretty impressive to see them all out there, and perhaps, uh, Miss Hall, she runs a bike ship over there with the kids, she's got a schedule, that's a better schedule than I get with our officers. And they all, they all sign up, and they all, they all take it seriously, so that's good. And that's kind of the whole point with sending these, these four students to this Legionville is, we'll send the fourth graders, they can come back, and the mentors for the younger kids that are interested, and kind of show them the pathways. I try to critique when I do see a little bit of like, you know, they're stressing, hold it up for a little three seconds before you just swing it on the road, but they get excited, so I'm glad that our citizens are driving slow and just being cautious when they're out there. Another thing, we're going to be doing interviews next Tuesday at the Police Commission for our internship. We have five applicants, they're all B C C students, so these will be individuals that will end up being our parking enforcement officers, we can wrap them up, so, so with our, our big events, and big help. Speaking of internships, I was going to jump on this mosquito thing. Just so you guys know, I actually did my internship, was with Metropolitan Mosquito Control. I'm not joking. I did that, and, yeah, so if you need any advice for the anti-people that, you know, we got all the things, still might have some of the pills, and we just throw in the wetlands, take care of them, you know? So our department will be trained up and taped.
Good, good to know, I agree. Any questions for the, please chief? All right, thank you.
Yep.
City attorney, you're up.
Yeah.
And three ordinance readings for you tonight. The first is essentially revised, you've read this ordinance last council meeting, but I needed to make some changes to it. Essentially, the base that I used to make the changes was incorrect, and so I've now corrected that, and we have a second and final, this will be a complete final reading. None of the changes have been edited, but it was the base of the ordinance is incorrect.
Motion by Al, supported by Angela. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, please call the roll. Councilmember Al Horstman?
Yes.
John Lottman?
Yes.
Jerome Bellis?
Yes.
Emily Rose?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Disby?
Yes.
Mayor Marza?
Yes.
Great. And then we have a second reading of ordinance 379, which is vacation, a portion of city-owned properties, so this is 10th Street, South, and Ahla Plant.
By John, supported by Jerome. Any discussion? Discussion? Seeing none, Casey, would you please call the roll? Councilmember Al Horstman?
Yes.
John Lottman?
Yes.
Jerome Bellis?
Yes.
Emily Rose?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Disby?
Yes.
Mayor Marza?
Yes.
And it's passed unanimously.
And then last but not least, the second reading of ordinance 380. Uh, we also had a public hearing on this today as well, which is resoning of various properties within the city.
It's 14 properties, so it's just for members of the House. Any motion? Moved by Angela, supported by Al. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Casey, would you please call the roll? Councilmember Al Horstman?
Yes.
John Lottman?
Yes.
Jerome Bellis?
Yes.
Emily Rose?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Disby?
Yes.
Mayor Marza?
Yes.
Or you can pass it unanimously. And that's it? Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, moving on, we have communications from Erin and Trant, showing the writer's role. And we did get quite a bit of information from St. Louis County Hazard, Household and Business Hazardous Waste Collection Days for 2025. Those are days that really need to be highlighted. Al, do you want to just take that over, because I am like five pages back?
Yes, I would love to mention all of the settings here. So St. Louis County holds a Household and Business Hazardous Waste Collection Days in, in our community. They will have at Ely Joint Public Works Facility on June 12th from 10 to 2:00 PM. It's a great opportunity for you to get rid of, clean, clean out some of those paint bottles, or, or cans, and things like that, that aren't being used, and get them properly disposed of. They will also have at the Northwoods Transfer Station on August 28th from 10 to 2:00. And then they have a Business Hazardous Waste Collection for very small quantity generators on June 5th from 11 to 3 at the Northwoods Transfer Station. It's important to note that that is actually required to have a, an appointment, and there's a phone number available, the clerk's office, I'm sure can give that to you if you, if you can't find it elsewhere. It's also available on St. Louis County's website. And if I could move on to the next one also, we have, we have the Take It To The Box Pharmaceutical Collections that they are, are promoting, and that, um, it's important to note that that disposing of, of any unused pharmaceuticals, it's very important that they don't go in your sewer, or septic dumpster, or in garbage. The best thing to do with any unused pharmaceuticals is to bring them right here to City Hall. We have a Take It To The Box container, uh, right here on the main level, when, when you first come in. And that is, that is the best way to get rid of pharmaceuticals, it can affect our, our wastewater, or it can affect our surface waters if it goes into the, into the sewage system. So please, please utilize that option. It's, it's available here whenever City Hall is open.
Thank you, Al. And we generally put these dates on our city website, so if you can't find them, we will make sure that they're put there, and I think usually, Casey, you put them on our website, or Facebook too, generally.
Yeah, Facebook and the city calendar, you can check.
But we're, there you go. So if you can't find it, then, I'll turn it over. All right, claim for payment. I'll take a motion for one or both.
I'll make a, yeah, I'll make a motion, we, we take A and B.
Is there support? Support by Emily? Any discussion? I'll put my plug in for Ely Community Resource, a valuable, a valuable resource, S and H states, adult, especially at the school. What they do for our community is, I, I don't have enough words. We wouldn't have to spend a couple more hours, so I'm glad that this is. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. We have no old business. Moving on to new business, amendment to listing contract between the City of Ely and Keller Williams Classic Realty, Jim Burke, extension for lots, nine of 10, in Block 1 of East Falls, in addition till April 21st, 2026. Any motion? Moved by Angela, supported by Adam. Any discussion? Any discussion? I think Jim's been doing a very, very good job helping us with these lots sold, so I like the direction this is going. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Uh, the member of, actually, excuse me. Resolution 2025-008, resolution authorizing water, sewer, electric rates increase. Motion, who fell out, supported by Emily? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? Please call the roll. Councilmember Al Horstman?
Yes.
John Lottman?
Yes.
Jerome Bellis?
Yes.
Emily Rose?
Yes.
Angela Campbell?
Yes.
Adam Disby?
Yes.
Mayor Marza?
Yes.
Resolution passed unanimously. All right, consider the temporary liquor license for Ely Folk School for May 7th, 2025, at Seaman's Park Beach for their annual spring bonfire. Moved by Emily, supported by Adam. Discussion?
I've attended this event for the last few years, and it's a great event.
Is there one question? Hooping event would have bottles, or pretty, cans, and cups, or what?
I think that's what's happened for the past.
Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right, and request for the Ely Events Group to consider the 4th of July Parade Route, and to work with Clerk Langowski on the route, since Harvey Street will be reconstructed this year, and have the Police Department secure necessary permits, and to consider the Fourth Annual Rock The Park Event in Whiteside Park on July 5th from 4 to 11. Invitations to the council, City Council, Ely Police Department, and Ely Fire Department to participate in the 2025 4th of July events. That's a law hard on citizens. Move, support. Support by Emily. Especially at the end. Um, discussion? Carol?
Just for everyone's information, the bid for Harvey Certably this week, so we have had people calling and asking, well, when is this block going to be done? When, when is this going to be done? I won't know that until a contractor is awarded the bid, and then we'll be with them in the county and see what the schedule is. So obviously, the 4th of July parade is an important event for the city and surrounding areas, so that is going to be a big part of the discussion, how we, how we realign that, or how that'll work for this year. So the county's aware of it, anyone bidding it's aware of it, so we'll keep you in the loop.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Anybody here hurt, please call Casey. With that, we are adjourned, have a wonderful rest of your, happy holidays day.
Hey, Emily?
Yes. Mosquitoes are us. I thought we had.